Open the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, October 2nd. It will be recorded and posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. It's on the list. We have approving the warrants that we are 24- post.
No exceptions. Of Debbie Harifon.
Please.
Aye.
I have settlements to be approved, but they are all prior to selectmen being on board. So I don't know. They can be approved if only one's up.
The public session.
Yeah, you trust?
Yeah.
I spoke to Lucy today. She just wanted to give authorization for me to release that she did have an accident. She had a fall as a fracture pelvic, broken arm. And yeah, she's in rehab now. In severe pain and a long journey, very concerned of not being here. She was hoping to be here today. Um, yeah, so very ambitious, but. What she wanted to let the people know and possibly what in two weeks, but further updates, she allows for me to provide. Remain in board and people.
Any other public session?
I just Barbara Rishinsky, Council on Aging, just to tell you that our flu clinic, flu vaccine clinic for seniors is Monday, October 23rd between 12 and 3. People would bring their Medicare card and be able to get a flu shot.
Knows what flu shot it is?
Um, I put in for the.
It's the high dose.
The high dose one for seniors. So we are joining with New Braintree. We have about 14 people right now. Oh, this is flu, not COVID, not COVID. And also on Friday, we are moving our functional fitness to the New Braintree Town Hall. So that we can have some space to. Just on Friday? Just on Fridays. So far. We don't know about Mondays yet.
And that's um, that flu clinic is in collaboration with the Leicester Regional Public Health Co. and DNA.
Thank you.
I want to bring up something if I may quickly. I am not a member of any council. This is strictly as a resident.
No.
Evening. Paul Rochat, Gaffney Road. This is regarding a community grant that the council agent was trying to procure. Which provided remote access to elders to take part in various. Programs that the council could set up, but perhaps an elder could not come because of transportation needs or health or whatnot. And I know there was a lot of work that was put into, you know, assembling the information for this application. The council. Was really not informed that this bid process was being turned over to the professional outfit that the Board of Selectmen has to write, you know, applications for grants. And when the grant application was completed, it was a very limited time left to submit it. And the council was basically told that nobody was allowed to sign it because they did not have selectmen's authorization to sign it. Now, it would appear to me that if the selectmen reviewed this and forwarded this process to this grant writing form, there shouldn't have been any question about somebody being able to sign it and submit it. And the end result is the council was given an invoice by, I think, like $1,870 for an application that never got submitted. That's $1,870, the taxpayer money that just got thrown out the window. So somewhere, there's something wrong with this process. I don't think the council is being informed about everything, which is unfair to them because they're all new and they're all in a learning curve and they're trying to do the best they can. And it seems like everybody keeps throwing things at them, you know, knocking them out at the ankle. I'll give you another example real quick, okay? You have a ceiling light fail downstairs. Electrician was hired to come in and repair the light. The council gets billed $150 for that. Now, I'm sure if a light went out in the treasurer's office or in the assessors' office, the treasurer or the assessor would not be charged for it, but would go to town hall repair. So why is the council getting hit with all this stuff?
And we, I don't know, but in regards to the bill, I had, it was senior center. I put it in the mailbox. Since then, it has been reversed. I was going to inform this council. I got that email today. Which bill? The 15650 for Leo McLeod. Yes, that was take reversed and not billed to the council on agent. Uh, and now sent bill to the town maintenance.
Okay. Another thing is there's a phone line that's dedicated to a fax machine, which is only used by elder services for the kitchen. Okay. Council agent gets hit with that bill. Now, I'm not saying it's not proper, but they've never been informed of their responsibilities financially. And I've been trying to help them do things in a proper manner, you know, to make sure that the council reviews things ahead of time before charges get made or approved. It's not where the council can decline to do something if they don't have the funding. But for them to keep all this information after it already happens is really wrong. And I just wanted to bring that attention to the board because I really think it's unfair. I mean, I think, I think they're trying to do a good job. Yeah. And you're getting stonewalled on a whole bunch of things. And I just really think that it's kind of harsh.
I think on the grant thing is, is that the paperwork that the state wants executive authority to sign? And we didn't have a meeting. When we were notified about it, we didn't have time to get a meeting together.
But I mean, would you think that if you approve going forward with a professional service, that to be able to sign it to be automatic, because you wouldn't be saying spend all this money and then.
Well, we haven't done with any other grants we've signed. But I agree with you. I think we should change that policy.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to bring up. Did the selectman actually review the request for that, that grant to be submitted?
We knew about it.
I mean, did you vote to forward this to the professionals? Okay, I'm just asking. I mean, because I really don't know. And I'm just.
May I also blight from the company, the grant, she did say, and Barbara is aware, because we talked about it, that typically that signatory request is provided after the grant is awarded as selecting someone. But in this particular grant, I don't know why they wanted it beforehand. And we did talk about that. I know that Barbara just came to me that, that morning and I, I know nothing. I was like, I tried to figure out if there was a way to, to get it done and see if like, could there's, you know, can we do it afterwards? Because all the other grants for police and fire have always been signed, given the fire chief or the police chief authority to be the signatory, which state then legally binds this person to make any decisions for the town. But she said this particular grant was this way, so.
Okay, I just basically trying to halve waste because that, that was almost $1,900 of waste.
Yeah. How long did the grant writer have to review that grant? And it probably said what the requirements were at the beginning.
She did stay in that morning. She's like, you know, because I've worked mostly with police. She's, you know, maybe I dropped the ball on that and in regards to maybe not fully, but I didn't have any communication with her during this whole process. That's not mine. That was, you know, the council on agent. Prior to just trying to get this, because Barbara needed something notarized for the grant. And I was not a part of the negotiations with, on the grant until the weekend, that weekend when it was finalized. Yeah. And all of a sudden, I'm going to be the point person and I asked what that was. And because of my position on the council on aging, they felt that was the position that I should take. So I had no advance notice. There were three weeks of Zoom meetings and whatever. Before I became involved and all the work of securing prices and all the materials was all done. And hours of work.
No, but I mean, it's the grant writer who's charging that, right?
Right.
The company she works for, yeah?
Let us talk to the grant writer. There's no way they're going to pay for that.
I just want to bring it up to you.
We're having a special meeting to vote on whether to pay it tomorrow and to review the treasurer's reports and paying the procedures for paying bills and all of that tomorrow around at 12:30.
Can I ask a question, please? Barbara Pucci, what was the grant going to be used for?
What was the grant going to be used for? It was, it was to provide remote access to elders or actually anybody that wanted to take part in one of the council agents' programs, but could not physically be where the program was. This was going to provide the hardware, the software, the licensing fees, everything so that somebody could zoom in and take part if they could not be present at the particular event, so.
Thank you. I would suggest that that's something that could be done with ARPA funds. That's what that money is for.
That was what I suggested.
Is there, I know I've seen the fire chief has been authorized to sign things. I think the Board of Health has applied for grants. So is there, should there be a policy? Is there a policy?
The Board of Health is.
Okay, okay.
The chairman.
Okay.
You know. But in her case, I think we could give her the authority.
That's like your fire.
Give her the authority to do this, so we don't have this falling through the cracks.
And if there are any other boards in that predicament?
You, you could actually let anybody apply for a grant or require the selectmen approve whether or not they want to receive the grant.
Yeah.
That would, that would give the freedom to the various boards and committees to go ahead and try and secure stuff. Again, it can't be accepted without the approval of the board. So I mean, the board would have the ability to cancel out if it is so desired. It's just one option that I thought of.
That's a good option.
Would that be on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Would that be for all grants like our local cultural council, art council? Because there were four or five programs that would be approved by the grant that failed. And we're going, that's the other part of tomorrow is to get an approval from the council on aging to go forward with applying to the arts lottery council for the four grants that were in the grant that failed.
Okay.
So should we ask for your approval before we even ask our committee for that?
When's the deadline?
Uh, the 17th of October. I was going to ask for it for tomorrow because our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 13th of October.
Is the Monday before. I mean, this is something that came before the board without any. I mean, you can, we could vote on it because you, we had no idea that this was coming up.
Yeah.
It's not a controversial topic. Yeah. So I would make a motion that would permit the council on aging for now, the council on aging to be authorized to apply for and is it apply for a grant, grants going forward? And get. But request that they submit them to the Board of Selectmen for review.
So the ones that I'm looking at that I would have them vote on tomorrow, you want to see before we actually vote? They're the Arts Lottery Council in town. They're local. They're not a state. So would you like to see them?
But you have to submit it on the 17th. So you've, you have permission to move forward on the grant potentially.
We'd like to move forward to fill out the applications and so forth, to know how much money we're going to be asking for, that sort of thing. Yes.
Second. We just voted. Have authority to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Policy meeting for everybody.
Thank you. You still open?
Yes.
Nice. Lucy Delio, you still wrote these. You have this work session meeting on mornings. The Board of Selectmen has a work session meeting some mornings.
Sometimes when there's a deadline, it's something that has to be approved right away. Like within that two weeks, we're not going to make the next meeting, usually when we do that.
So it's, it's not a regularly scheduled thing. You're saying it's more an emergency situation and that's why they're.
Usually there's a situation that comes up to need something or right next to regular meeting, we put it on a work meeting.
Can you vote in your work meetings, in your work session?
We call it a work meeting. It's a Board of Selectmen's meeting. No matter how you look at it, by the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We give the $48,000, those reports that's there. We can vote in them.
Can they be moved to a time when people that work nine to five can attend?
Sure. We've done midnight.
Yeah, that would be handy because I can't make it at 10 o'clock in the morning. I want to stay somewhat informed of what's going on.
Absolutely.
And now we have this too, the Zoom. I'm assuming work meetings would be on Zoom too.
Everything would be on.
I, I do, I mean, that was one of my old business items from last meeting was talking about work meetings. So that was one of the issues was if it could, ideally be in an evening would be better. But Friday afternoons would really be the only time that I'd be available outside of anything.
It's done. Barbara Pucci, you said that there are regular select meetings, but they're really not because there's no public session.
Yeah. That's because we're trying to keep it to one topic.
Doesn't seem quite right to be able to vote on things and not have public comment in a selectman meeting.
Understand that, yeah. We could not do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, public session.
I mean, I, I've spent a lot of time preparing to be on the board and read through public meeting law and all of that. And certainly the, the board chair has the prerogative to recognize anybody or nobody. That's the law and it was pretty surprising to see that. But I think personally, I feel like we should try to be more inclusive, certainly when, when able to.
Good idea.
Okay, great. So I'm back. Thanks for having me. Uh, so we're attempting the intermunicipal agreement. So basically, as I explained last time I was here, the towns of Oakham and New Braintree, um, in funding our chiller project that we brought forward to the towns last spring, have decided to pay ahead. And so your apportionment was figured out as of October 2022. But the other three towns in our regional area, their apportionment, because they were borrowing, was going to fluctuate over the life of the loan. So we sought legal counsel. Legal counsel said in this one unusual situation, normally we would typically borrow together. It just happens that it's a smaller project and some of our towns could fund it upfront. Um, that in this particular situation, it could create inequity because their rate would go up with their student enrollment and down with their student enrollment. So we worked with legal counsel to draft an intermunicipal agreement, which you see in front of you. This changes absolutely nothing for Oakham. You still have the same amount that you were assigned back in the spring. It just allows the other three towns to maintain that amount for the life of the loan without that fluctuation. It's a one-time, non precedent setting agreement. And we would love if you'd consider signing it and sealing it. We've gotten, we've been to every other select board. We're in Barry tonight at the same time. So we're just about done the rounds. Do you have any questions about it?
No, that's, it's exactly what I thought you said the first time.
I, I just expressed concern that Robertson was so blunt in their disapproval, but I understand that they were upset and that's, that wording was written. But otherwise I would move that we accept the agreement. Yes.
We've never had a situation like this in the history of Quavon previously. Normally when we do like a roof project, it's a lot of money and so everybody borrows at once. So it's unusual, to be honest with you. We've learned from that too. So this is the one I'm going to ask you to sign. And if you could sign your name as legibly as possible, that'd be great. And then I'll head out to the town clerk and have her.
Lucy commented on how fast I signed. Wrote every letter she sent.
Thank you so much. We'll send you a copy when we have everything all together.
Very good. Thank you.
Bill, we're best, I weren't. The latest word that we have is that the attorney for Longview Estates LLC, that's Sonny Como's company. The attorney is going to revive Oakham Sand and Gravel Corp. The purpose of conveying whatever they own to Sonny's company. And his attorney is also going to make whatever arrangements have to be done for easements on some of the lots to be also conveyed to the Longview company. At that point, Longview Estates LLC will own, finally own the whole package. Then the attorney for Longview will submit that to the Board of Selectmen. And as soon as that's done, we forward it to planning board. We make sure it's a complete application. And we'll get the highway superintendent to look at the condition of the road and I think the only other thing we would need to do is just, if it looks like there's anything not in the application, we'd ask KP Law to look at it. Otherwise, it should be a smooth process whenever that comes in to you.
That's done because of the town meeting or adopting the word.
Well, after the planning board reviews it, we have 45 days. We probably won't need that much to write a letter back to the selectmen saying, yes, this is ready for the selectmen to vote to put it on the warrant.
Okay. Those progress.
It sounds similar to what was in the minutes at the June meeting. Exactly.
It's actually been back and forth since January.
But it's been in the hands of, of this.
Como's attorney, yes, basically.
But it was in town council.
No.
Holding it up.
Yes.
Be for special time meeting or would it have to be annual time meeting?
It depends on when to submit it. Because I, when does the warrant open for this upcoming?
We haven't opened it yet.
Okay, do we know roughly when it would be scheduled? By November? Like, it depends on how they, how quickly they actually get it together and submit it to the board and selectmen.
Okay, you want to let Sol recap or just, okay. So I've raised well that drilled initially, I think, back in 2005. Technically potable for a while, not anymore. And we've noticed we've, we keep running out of water. So initially, they put a Jazzwell seal down the existing well because they stuck a camera down it, found a ton of leaking coming in. So a lot of groundwater leaking in. They tested it. There was arsenic in the water. So that indicates there's runoff from pro salt and whatnot. So they put a seal down. Once they put the seal down, we no longer had any water, which means that the only water pretty much that was coming in was the groundwater. So, and we had noticed that at the library for the past year, very discolored, smelling nasty, you know, like not good water. So they, we let, we waited for a bit to see if it would refill the well. It never did. We kept running out of water. Not quite once a week, but routinely throughout the summer, probably all the rain that we're getting helps us live long. So anyway, so then it was determined we need to either drill a new well or deepen that well. That well is only 100 or I think, I thought it was 131, but I think you're right and said 145. So they were going to deepen that well, but when they got there on Monday to pull out the seal so that they could drill down, they couldn't get the seal out. And getting the seal out requires like $3,000 worth of work if you have to, like, just turn it into, you know, they have to drill down. So that was going to add $3,000 worth of work to the project. So they thought the cheaper thing to do instead would be to try and drill a new well about 10 feet away, which is, was part of what we were discussing already. You know, that was always an option. When they dug into the ground though, it's all just, it's all just rock down there. And I talked to a couple of town who think probably what happened is a long, long time ago before the library has built the town, put in a ton of drainage there to help with the water coming down that hill. Because I've heard many people say there used to be tons and tons of water coming down there. So the, the ground is no good for drilling. And in order to try and create, drill a dwell, it would require a lot more money because they have to build a box basically so that they could drill down into it. So that's. So then we went back to, can we deepen that well? Now the cost to deepen the well is under $12,000. Originally, we were thinking six or seven. So the other option is to look at the well that's down road, down Culberk Road, next to the church. Which I only have anecdotal information about. It's going to cost about $1,200 to $1,500 to put a camera down it, take a look, water sample test and pump test it, to see if it's a viable well. If they put a camera down and they immediately notice it's not going to be good, then that's only a $500 cost. So it might end there or it might, to, to fully test it, it would be $1,200 to $1,500. So I think that should be our next step. I asked Aaron if he could look at the information on the well that the town hall uses, but because there's already two buildings sharing it, we didn't think that was.
I mean, I think that's problem, a problem already. The church and the town hall are the same. You're allowed to have a maximum of 15 connections. I don't know how many the church has before you become a public water supply. And I don't know that that would pass a public water supply. I don't even know where this well is located. So there's rules about it being so. So there's rules about it being so close to a parking lot, so close to a road. If you put in a public water supply, you can get exemptions if it's already been in place. But I mean, I think the town should have its own, but, but they would have to run it, run a connection from that well under the road. So it would be more than the $500 or $1,500.
It's $1,500, yeah, $1,200, $1,500, just to see if that well is a viable option. All accounts I've heard were that it was a good producing well when it was used and it was only used for about a decade before. I don't know if anyone in the room has any more information about it. But that's all I've gotten so far. So those are, they, it's not that they couldn't potentially drill a new well in the front yard of the library. It's just that the expense is going to go way up because of the, what's under the ground. So.
It said on the 2000 well report that they had a clay mix from zero to 42 feet over in that corner. But that's in the building more stuff, the further they got down.
Yeah, they weren't very, they started out within 10 feet of it and then moved another 10 feet over to see if it was better. We didn't move across the roadway to the corner because we're going to have to shut down the road to do that work. And they kind of didn't want to dig a giant hole there as well, just to find out that it's exactly the same. So, yeah, every option involves spending money.
I just wondered how much it would cost to dig a line under, under the road.
Yes, I don't know.
What's the difference in price between that and going through the system?
Down Cold Brook Road and probably cross kind of at the intersection. So I don't know the cost of that type of work because I don't know if that's something the town could do or if we'd have to hire it out. I'm not sure.
And you have, I mean, you have to be 100 feet from the septic field. So could you do it in the field somewhere, but then you'd be going uphill?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I had said, well, what about across the town common? In the common, like along the tree line or something? At least that would be running less piping.
That would just be crossing two roads instead of one, yeah. So although I guess you'd have to, yeah, it's just going to be kind of a mess either way, I think.
But I think it's an issue for, the research I did is, at least for employees, you need to provide a bathroom facility.
Yeah.
And so in the short term, if there's no bathroom, I think there should be some porta potty or something.
Well, we can, I can leave a town hall, because the town hall has bathrooms. So I have a town hall here, I could leave it with the staff so that the staff can use these bathrooms separately. And we do have some water. It's really, really low, but like, it's enough, it's enough to flush the toilets a couple of times throughout the day right now. You know, it's not, it's not sufficient, but we'd need to, yeah. And I did check in with the state. We could be open without publicly accessible bathrooms. It's just, yeah, the employees need.
But the employees also need a publicly accessible bathroom.
Yes, yeah, but this one would count, wouldn't it?
I guess if you can get it from downstairs.
Yeah. I just have to leave a key for them. So we can, we can remain open and operating to the public for the time being. That's not an issue, but it's just a question of, we're going to have to do some investigative work that's going to cost some amount of money in either direction. And it seems like spending $1,200 or $1,500 to see if that well might be an option is better than spending $12,000 to try, or $15,000. How much is it going to cost to try and put a well back in the front yard? Or rehab the existing well only to find out that we're still not getting what we need out of it?
What is it going to cost us to rip it right?
Right.
Yes. And that, I don't really know about that type of work, yeah.
Philip Warbass, this is a dug well under the library floor that used to rise and fall with groundwater. I believe that's what they used to use before remodeling. But it's, it's the current floor capped it. I don't know if that's worth exploring, just to see if that could be.
How would, how would they spoil that?
First step, I guess, would be just to drill it up, swallow it hole in the floor so you could test the water quality and water level. If it was feasible, figure out how to at the floor and attach submersible pump to the existing system.
I think we should, the highway superintendent should be involved, especially if it's potentially going to impact the road. And I think there should be an estimate of what it could potentially cost because I think it could be equal to or more than doing the well that's already there. And no sense wasting $1,500 if you're going to have to do that one anyway. And if you can get by.
There's no guarantee that the one in front.
But at least you've tried. And then you might know how much it would cost to drill a well in the town common as well, which would be shorter distance than down the street.
Is, is putting a well in the town common an option?
I mean, I said you have to find town land. I mean, I am aware that property owners have given permission to have a well in a neighbor's property. But I did ask the neighbor there where his well, and it's basically right in the front where the library's well is.
There's also a well underneath the town common that they discovered when they were resur surveying the town common. It's a large well, groundwater well for fire protection. And Kevin knows where the cap is.
It's, it's, yeah, they use that water for the sprinkling system.
Every jam gets mixed in the road?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can see where the grass is not growing as well there.
Brett Taylor, I would suggest, if I may, putting a meter on the well for the town hall. See what kind of water you're drawing with the church and the town hall combination. Storage would be the biggest part of this well because they're not going to use that much over the library. They have a tool that will borrow right under the road without disturbing anything. And then you pick it up on the other side and push it the pipe right under. That's the cheapest way to go. We already own that well.
Right.
We know that water quality is okay. Put in a larger storage facility of this well, on this end, and a large tank on the library end, you're promised. Don't have to drill many wells.
I think we should, I think someone's got to look into the public water supply to set, so that's a DEP question. Which would then require testing.
You said they can have up to 15.
So if you, what triggers is it's a 25 or more customers, users in a course of, I think, 60 days and no more than 15, or no more than 15 connections. So in Okem, currently Treasure Valley, their dining hall, Lake Dean, the, the other campground, Pine Acres, the Country Day School, those are all public water supplies.
What else is a connection? A sink or a?
A bathroom, a toilet.
Okay, each feature.
Or, but it's that 25 and it's not, it's a total of 25 people in the course of 60 days.
Oh, yeah, we did see that. Is it either or, or you just have to meet one?
I think it's one or the other. If you meet one of them, you make potentially be a public water.
Sounds like either way, it would be, yeah. All right, yeah, I can look into that. Maybe with a little bit more information from you if you'd mind sending me in.
Yeah, it's, it's all DEP Board of Health, that has nothing to do with it. But I can send you the link where.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, you want me to look into the possibility of tying into the town hall well first? Yes, it would be, yes, if it's possible.
We know the quality of the water.
Although, is this water testing?
The meals, the meals breaks out of the basement, don't they? So, oh, they don't.
They don't prepare any food? There's no food permit?
Would getting it tested be the first step? Can I, can I work with the company we've been working with to do those things? Or do you want to be the person handling that?
We want to ask, I mean, do we want an estimate for that and estimate for the other things? That way, there's options. And because the colder it gets, I don't know if that gets any more difficult to dig a well. We don't have many wells being dug in January.
Yeah. Would Kevin be able to generate an estimate for the work to tie it into that, that well?
Going from here?
Yeah. Okay.
Next, the records access, the policy.
We opted to delay it because I believe we needed your input on the origin.
Yeah, I think I had put it on last night for discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, because I remember we found some Igos.
That was on the remote policy.
Oh, okay.
Right now, by default, we receive all the requests for records. Most towns do, and what the state says, and any agency and municipality should work as access offices. We used to have them. For some reason, we just never.
On the website, and that's law.
Yeah, but we are required to have them. So what most towns do is they take their department heads authorize them to be the records office. And now the department head has the authority to say to someone under them, research this. But the response will be coming from the department head. And like I said, Chris doesn't have access to police records, fire records, you know, all of that. So she's going to send her email out requesting it and now we have a time going. But that's why they changed the law. That's why they wanted records offices, excuse me. I think that's something we should consider doing. Other boards like Board of Health, Board of Assessors, they have elected boys, they can point the wrong. This law changed in 2017. So. That new, but it's not that old and something we should have been doing right along.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely says effective January 1st, 2017 on our website and it lists how to access and it lists the town clerk or selectman, administrative assistant, treasurer, fire chief, police chief. And then it does say that all the other boards would go through clerk. But I think it's, it looks like a policy. So I'm wondering if there was a policy and.
I think there was one. We just need to make sure it's up to date. And we need to make those appointments, that they have the authority to do.
I'm only concerned with the, the boards. Many of them meet once a month. The Board of Health happens to have a clerk today, but if they don't have a clerk tomorrow, I think having the town clerk be the point person for the board is helpful because then they can make, try to find the person and call somebody else rather than just going to a Board of Health or somebody's email.
Clear from the policy posted on the website.
So should we start by, you know, printing this? Recently, because Maribor's listed as a contact. Would this be a starting point?
I'll update it on there. If you look at our list of appointments.
Like any annual appointment.
Board list. But the next meeting, we should make those appointments.
Review the policy.
Next meeting, the actual appointments. We can review the policy and make sure it's up to date. Yeah, this revoked. It's the patient issue, the policy. Policy here. Basic policy. All of the recommendations of the Attorney General is open meeting laws on the 29th, CMR 10.
I did, yeah. Somebody else that was here that thought so, too. Might have been Lucy. I like second page, meeting location to be clearly audited to one another period. And then the end of members with the two paragraphs down members may not. There's just a certain priority there. Participation, participants. At the end of that sentence. Those were the only emissions, but I did have questions. So it said, Okem has selected the Zoom system as its standard audio and video conferencing remote presentation technology. Are others allowed? Microsoft Teams, FaceTime? They are by the state, but does this policy allow it?
Also, it's not.
So the Board of Health had a meeting. We don't, we didn't have access to the system. So in order to provide that to the public, we use Teams. So I, I think it would be limiting, but only use Teams. Or we have to make sure that, I would ask that it be. I would ask that it be accessible, more accessible than this current system seems to be with the rooms only. And I believe Stephen was going to look in to see. What it would cost for licenses versus rooms and how many. User names we could have. So we haven't, I don't think that's been provided yet, but.
Yeah, so my meeting is for Friday with our account manager. What I would like for the board to understand, uh, not understand, to figure out for me to bring to the table, how many individual licenses do you want? Currently, the only license we have is the one infrastructure or really my account, but it'll turn into an infrastructure. So from there, we just need to know. How many individual licenses be looking to do? And as far as the team thing goes, just remember you're doing government business and it's not on a government owned Zoom room. It'd be a problem.
Yeah. So that's why I think we need to make sure it's accessible for all boards and committees. I mean, and I think like the Board of Health would be willing to purchase its own or pay for. A license so that it can ensure that it can operate remotely. Because this, from my understanding, doesn't allow, if there was a snowstorm and we had to have a meeting, someone has to be here, which is more restrictive than the state law.
But what if someone?
It's not that you have to be there, right? So I'm trying to figure out right now that again, I'm trying to save the town. Money on this. Sorry to just butt in, but I'm trying to figure out if I was to enable basic users, right, that are not licensed. You could get into the system to start a meeting, but again. You know, having a licensed user allows them to set up their own meetings in their own personal meeting room, right? So that's the difference. Again, I'm trying to work through these little. Issues and trying to get it as the most accessible as possible. So I'll leave it at that. I apologize.
Don't you think that someone would always have to be here regardless? Because what if someone wants to come in to a meeting and not have access?
This big law allows fully remote meetings. And and it even says that. The public doesn't necessarily have to have access to that remote meeting as long as it's available later on. So, but if if a meeting is posted remote, so the Board of Assessors could meet fully remote, you know, three people from home, the Board of Health could work fully remote, three people from home.
Would that apply to all boards or just?
The state law allows it.
So even the select makes them do that?
State law allows it.
That's only until 2025.
Yeah.
Spectrum of the COVID.
They, I mean, they passed the law to to extend it to 2025, but there's certainly a push that that be permanently put in place.
I have one other question. Sorry.
Fantastic.
So. Aaron, so I I read the 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 law, right? But you with these remote meetings, you you're allowed, you're still allowed to have remote participation from the public, right? Is that what? Because it sounded like you're saying that you don't have to, if somebody can't access it remotely because they don't have internet access. I I guess. I'm a little confused there.
So the point, the point I was making is that boards need to be able to have remote access and not have to be in the in one of these modules.
In a meeting room.
Right.
Correct. But yeah, I mean, again.
Yeah, I guess for me, my only concern would be for those who would want to come in person, right? We look at it from the other side, like it's easy access online for people who can't come, but there are some folks that. Want to come in person, don't have internet, don't have the technology or whatnot. So if that board, big or small, or committee decides to do it all electronically, then now it's excluding. Different category of people. No, I don't have anything about.
Legislature. Decided. So that was. One thing was any other. Applications. And then. I put, what about use of chat and Zoom? Members may not participate in any meeting by text messaging. So that would be like a cell phone, instant messaging, email, web chat, or any other technology that would prevent deliberations from being audible to all participants. So I know that the Quavon Regional School District would during their meetings would take questions from chat. During the thing, they didn't open up the phone lines. So. If and they even had school committee members having to type in messages because they couldn't communicate, they had bad reception and a great tree. So. This looks like right now it would prevent even a board member from using the chat function.
The only reason that's in there is because the opinion of the Attorney General at the time this was put together.
Because you couldn't record the deliberations or something like that.
Yeah. Somebody in the audience is going to ask a question. You need to be able to hear that question, not on my phone.
So a question on that. So. For a remote participant to even bring up a question. The way that I understood it was that they send a message to the host. That's the only person they're allowed to chat with. The host would then, who would, let's just say Mary Bell would read the question out loud and go, can we unmute? We're going to, would you like to be unmuted or we're going to unmute you now since you have a question? But they obviously form the question before they even ask it. They say to the broader room and do you want to add any context? You unmute them and speak. But if they completely chat, you're allowed to read those out in public and you're supposed to do so. But we've disabled it so that you cannot chat with each other, like participants can't chat with each other. The only person they can participate with is the meeting host.
Yeah, and that, I mean. Teams Zoom, you can do that for every meeting you start, limited to who you can communicate with. Quavon, it was a sometimes a circus with the comments that were going back and forth. I don't think it's not allowed. It's just, I think, a better way to have it go just to the host. See, any documents or exhibits referenced during the meeting shall be part of the official record and shall be listed in the meeting minutes. So that would mean like everything that we received on tonight would be attached to the minutes.
Yes.
Does this apply to the meeting regardless of it being remote? Although all meetings will be remote, at least for the Board of Selectmen. And then the proposed boards on here. But. I guess that that must be, it's public meeting laws, public records, anything provided as part of the minutes anyway. Whenever any member is taking part in a meeting by a remote participation, the public shall also be allowed to participate remotely. So that would be through the technology that we're offering. So Zoom. Any meeting which allows remote participation shall include information for remote meeting participation on the agenda. I put. When possible, what if it's last minute? So let's say there's a. Would there be a circumstance where there'd be a last minute emergency meeting that we didn't have the Zoom information to be able to put on the agenda? Could it be added? Like you add any last minute updates? Does that prevent the meeting from being scheduled in the 48 hours? If it didn't have the Zoom information?
I think, and Steve, can you can correct me if I misunderstood this, at least with the meeting room, I think it's the same link always with the same. So right now it's not like a host, a regular, where it's a different meeting ID and a different password. It's the same. And Steve, can you confirm that?
You are correct. You are correct. Every single time we start a meeting from that room, it is the same.
So whatever I posted on this new, on this agenda with the Zoom meeting and the ID, that will be the same one because it's a meeting. For now, unless it changes. Then it would be a new link and a new password each time.
The following town body shall offer, no participation shall offer, select board finance and planning. I'm just curious, why were those three selected?
A lot of towns do those three because they're the major.
Yep.
Major ones. Anybody can join.
Yeah. But we'd be setting a policy that they would have to.
Be be, well, the other thing is. The law says that both bodies on their own could opt out.
Okay.
That's the state laws.
Yeah. Any other board may choose to offer remote participation. I guess that would be by a vote or is that at chair discretion?
It's true discretion.
It has to be a vote. Selectment, tell the point of meeting coordinator, ensure that all bodies that muster wish to allow public participation, do not create a resource conflict. I'm just wondering if there was an option to do an online. Sign up like I think in Outlook. Some companies you can see the calendar and you can put your information in there.
You should post the meeting anyway.
Right.
So I have no issue with the policy. I just believe that the technology is limiting. As as it currently stands.
Everyone have that meeting so we can work out.
And if I may, as a town resident, I know that. A Zoom is all. Encourage transparency, but I I personally do think that it's a great option, but I also think that. I don't, I'd hate to see no meetings being held in person at all for a board because I do think that there is a different population as well. That doesn't, that's just my opinion as a resident, not as an employee. I think that. You know, get into one, but then. Another group is left out. I don't know. I just feel like meetings should be somewhat held in person. That's just my opinion.
I just, I think in emergencies, it would be nice to have the option. I mean, I if I'm running a meeting and I can't be here because I have COVID, I'm not sure that another member would understand how to set that thing up.
Yeah.
So I would need to be able to have access from home to do it. And. I mean, it sounds like Stephen said that there is an option, but then we're talking about licenses and if I'm not the licensee, can I do that?
Work your edit as you.
Right.
Again, I'm still working on those options there and so I'm trying to make it as cheap as possible. And resulted that like, and like I mentioned before. I will be providing instructions for people to be in the room to start the meeting. There'll be like a little PD, like a. Book, you know what I'm saying?
And we're going to discuss. Whether or not these meetings will be. So they're streaming live on Zoom for anybody, no one. That joined. But it can also be, it can be a link on Facebook, the Facebook page where people could just click on the link to join. And how soon thereafter does it get posted? And I don't believe the town has shared the location of where to watch these. YouTube. Videos yet. So I think we need, we should use the. Facebook to at least announce that if you want to watch these meetings going forward, this is the YouTube channel. I haven't defined it. But I know that the town has announced it.
Yeah, I was going to announce, yeah, that I did create that YouTube page, like I had said last week. And I turned off comments. I also turned off, there's no live chat, you know, there's no live chat right now. Once the meeting's done, I'll just upload it and automate the process through an API. And I would love to know what you guys want to do if you want to, like, so if you simulcast on YouTube, you cannot, are you going to monitor, I'm not YouTube, uh, Facebook, are you going to monitor the chat that comes with that? As well, or the only way you can participate as a town resident is to be on the meeting? That would be another question for me.
I don't think we should be monitoring multiple.
No.
Yeah. But as far as transparency and making sure everybody knows about it, I think it should be at least a link that people could click on Facebook so that they can join. And I think if you go on the website, you can. You can click on that. But it'd be nice to see.
Yeah, I was just waiting for, because I know that it was working out the kinks and I'm not sharing anything without being, you know, authorized by the board. So once it's ready and. Sure.
People wrap this up Friday. You have a meeting Friday, Steve?
What's that now?
You have a meeting Friday?
I can meet on Friday.
Do you have a meeting already?
With Zoom, the Zoom account rep?
Yes, I do. I have an account, I have a meeting with them at 10 a.m.
Oh, I mean, I mean, I think the policy is is good. I just hope that we can look at expanding access.
All right. We can approve the policy tonight.
Yeah.
He comes up with some more ideas, we can alter the policy that handles it.
Yeah, and we just, we had two questions from boards because this was sent out.
Yes.
To all of the boards.
One question was from the Board of Assessors office and their question was if there was going to be devices provided for them to log in. If we pull it up exactly. It comes from the assessors email. Oh, remote question. Question from the Board of Assessor's office below. Okay. This is from Andrea. Says, I sent the PDF to the board members to review and the only question they have is, will every department head have access to Zoom? And a device to run it at home if necessary. So that was one question. And then the other question. Was from. Alan, I believe.
September 24.
He wanted some clarification on some language. May you help clarify the language under procedures that read as follows. The meeting chair shall deny remote participation request only when the current laws and regulations required a quorum be physically present at the meeting. And the requested member is required to meet the quorum. Requirement.
He says, so between now and March 31st, 2025, we can have remote quorum unless the governor change it and if the legislature. Changes the above temporary provision. Is that correct? And is there any other regulation that think company needs to be aware of that could possibly put us in violation? I don't think the policy mandates that remote participation. Can't be full. Uh, can't be full. It's just that the technology would make that. Somewhat challenging potentially, but doesn't prevent it.
Right. And again, it just then only satisfies anyone who wants to join remotely.
I didn't read anything that said it looked like it was, um.
You know, the original requirement said that you had to have a quorum present.
Right. Yeah.
But that was, that was probably temporarily suspended because of COVID.
Yeah, and then they extended it until twenty twenty-five that there's no.
But the town can set their own set of policies if they want to alter that, correct? Like you guys can do.
I don't know, you can make the policy. More strict than. State law for public access. And this is just saying. That while the law is the way it is. We're okay, but when the law changes, I mean. We just revise the policy if twenty twenty-five changes. But I think it's fine if it is. Do I move acceptance of the remote meeting participation policy as presented with the, um. Type of.
This is my, my bullet forms on enforcement for the officials.
Just trying to. Joey Han from Iowa stopped in doing her yearly rounds. It's a quick, wow, maybe she could say like twenty minutes or so. Um, so everything for Ocam is pretty consistent, no major changes, nothing has really changed where. The preview on policy would require to go into a different, you know, stop. So everything will, only increases will be. The typical. Yearly increases, but other than that, she did provide these two forms to be filled out, one by the police department. For law enforcement, liability insurance and one for public officials, which would then be everyone else. Um, I filled them out. She also provided me with the copies that were last submitted. Who were filled out and signed by my predecessor, but. Efforts to be in completely, oh, want to make sure that the board sees it. Didn't want to sign anything without, you said just a two prior ones. So it's really like, almost like a duplicate, uh. Didn't want to sign anything without. There are a couple pieces that would change, like number of employees. So I would. Follow up and ask Wendy and fill in the right number, but most of it is all standard. And again, these are the copies that were built out. If anyone wants to see them.
I know, I think Brian filled it out or he.
Yes, Brian, yeah.
So he's reviewing it.
Yep. Yeah, he came in, I had called him, he came in, we filled it out. And he signed his, just like he had done prior and then. Uh, prior, um, having him sign the other one. But just wanted to.
I have your phone.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I I noticed, uh, so on the last meeting I asked that, um. We. Um, there are many people in town that don't know what our biz, um. There are boards that may not have had an opportunity to even be part of the. Process of making recommendations for possible ARPA covered investments. Um, I looked at the town of Paxton, uh, many times, we've actually had a, um. A committee of, um, the public, um, when ARPA was first, um, announced. Uh, where they took, uh, feedback surveys, um, on what was important to the community. Um, and honestly, since I, it's only been since I joined the board. Then I saw in the first meeting what had been spent, um, and what was proposed. Um, and so my thought was, um, to let the. Public know, um, what has been spent, how we've, um. Utilized, um, the ARPA funds, provide a brief explanation of what it is. And, um, also invite all of the, um, town departments and boards. Um, if they have ideas, because I believe there was a hundred and something thousand dollars left. Which we don't have to identify. Until, um, December of twenty twenty-five, so there's no urgency, um, to spend it all. Um, and, um, I I noticed that the board health didn't have anything on the list that was distributed. Um, but I'm sure, um, the board of health would have, um, ideas on how it would be.
We. Months ago allocated ten thousand.
Yeah, it wasn't on the, uh, the list. Um, but I think it might be an opportunity to invite the boards to to ask for funds. So it'd be, my my ask, um, was two things. Um, send out a message to all boards and committees, letting them know in departments. Um, and then the second would be just to do a a brief explanation of, um, ARPA. And, um, uh, we've invested it, um, for the townspeople because certainly I think all of the things are very appropriate. Um, but it's just in the effort of transparency. And it is all public, um.
Have you looked at the dispatch?
Uh, Rattlin's. During COVID.
Okay. Look at it now. They have a running total of their entire budget. So you have to talk about transparency, you can see it.
Yeah. It's nice that they have all those full-time employees.
Well, that's.
Yeah. Paxton is not as big as Rattlin, I don't think, um, but they have some basic, um, explanations.
We can put basic in.
And and even an invitation, if there's anything you think that the town, um, would benefit from email or a selectman.
Yeah.
Um, we're open to. To it.
Ideas.
Yeah.
Most of these things are very expensive, things that involve stabilization.
And if I may, as you can see, the items that don't have a dollar amount or items that. The board of selectmen had discussed, but clearly still don't have estimates for, um. I mean, alone in school repairs. Certainly the whole hundred and eighty-six dollars would go and certainly go there and still need more. So it's just a matter of prioritizing which projects and how to, um. Go from that.
Yeah, so the board of health wasn't on this one.
I will make sure to update it and add that ten thousand.
Fire and police radios. Leave him supplied for rent.
Yeah. Yeah, and these are things that were just kind of possibilities. Or at least the radios were.
In the library, well, six thousand.
Well, that's no longer six thousand. And of course we saw the sidewalk because she had reported that it could be some damage to the sidewalk.
Okay, yeah.
So far, the lift, that's an ongoing thing. I know that they. On here, that's not on here either, is the library roof.
Right.
That's a big one and that's not on here. So. You know, I know that Lucy was really getting concerned and she's, uh. Spoke on it at the last meeting with the school repairs because she knows. Literally, we, our funds can be completely used for the needs that that school needs and still need more money, so. Yes, well, you know.
And that's where I think if if you give everybody an opportunity, even if it's two weeks. You've got ideas and then the board of selectmen can look at the list, prioritize it. Um, and then plan it moving forward.
But would it be, if I can ask just for. All, uh, knowledge, would it be just anything that they suggest or off of a list?
I I think the best people to offer recommendations are those that are. That the boards, so they would offer their.
Okay, something.
Their suggestions.
Yeah.
Like, one thing that I I I've talked, um, before I got on the board was, um, you know, six, eight thousand dollars to get a trailer. For the board of health because we've got tons of stuff that in a public health emergency to transport.
Conversation where the ten thousand was mentioned that you had ten thousand, so.
So, um, that would be probably what the board of health would formally potentially request. Um, I know the assessors, there's different online systems, um. So that you could go on and, um, look up your value today. Uh, we, I think we used to have that at one point, but then they, you know, they charge you yearly fees to keep it up. But even like an online payment system, um, setting that up with, would ARPA cover the initial. Investment in, um, setting up a system like that. So those were kind of the ideas that I thought. Kind of opening up the forum for new ideas potentially. For this, um, list that will be spent seven times with that small bit of money.
I have a question. Um, you know, from my perspective on the finance committee, um, possibly expanding. Our Microsoft O three sixty-five licensing to include SharePoint. For budgets, right? So when a department shares their budget, they share it on a SharePoint site. That way we can collaborate easier, quicker and faster to come to the board. Like the finance committee board of select meetings we do at the end of the year. Where we're able to like instantly get this information or they're able to input their budgets on an online spreadsheet. I mean, that's the like next level, right? And again, we're talking about. Year-over-year increases, right? Even with what Aaron proposed with online payments. I mean, I would love that. I don't know who wouldn't, right? Um, but again, year-over-year costs, but that's besides the point. Having. More, uh, the SharePoint. Site on Office three sixty-five to collaborate, right? Um, I think we'd be so beneficial, especially from the finance committee's perspective in that way. Um, like we can lock down the master spreadsheet where we were editing it, but you're able to see live numbers that are being updated to it. Right? So, um, things of that nature. So, yeah.
Yeah, and that.
Bring that out there.
That was the board of health's, um, observation when the new Office three sixty-five came out, hoping that there'd be. Additional features beyond the email, which the email is fantastic. Um, you can send more than five emails and, um, not have a problem with too much space. Um, but looking at, you know, other features, I pay twelve fifty. A license for the board of health right now to be able to have, um, OneDrive, which allows, um. Uploading of of saved documents so that if someone wants a copy of their plan that they submitted. Three months ago, I don't have to run to the town hall, um, to get it, but, um. Wh-what do we pay per user now? Uh, were there other options that could have been considered? I mean, I think the SharePoint is, um, kind of a standard, um, in any business, um, to be able to make sure.
And the OneDrive. OneDrive specifically, but be careful, Aaron, with using a personal OneDrive because. We're talking, um, local and state government, that is a separate. So they don't sell that publicly, right? And even with our Zoom work, they know that we're a government account, right? Having government records on pers, um, on a personal, but like, um. Non-business users or even business users putting government documents on there, you got to be real worried about that, wary about that, right? Not worried, um, because it it does go against local state, um, government. Uh, like laws in regards to storing government data on personal servers or whatever. I I'm not exactly remembering the whole language.
Yeah, I I don't know about that. I I know that public record law says that if I get a email on my personal email. It's still a public record. Um, it doesn't prohibit me from getting email on my personal email, but if it's, um. Related to my official business, that is, uh, retrievable under public record. So I'm still required to. Provide, um, documents and and communication that might be on a private system.
More people. I tried to contact four different people. First one, uh, he had a. Open heart surgery this year, so he said he'd love to do it, but he can't do it. Uh, the two quotes we got here, two guys from Barry, uh, Joe Petrophon and Tom Petty. And the last one I tried to get hold was. And, uh, they, I tried calling them in the summertime and they weren't available as I called in September, so I called back in September. And they said. That they are booked for current school year, you know, but if you want to put in a request for it, you can. I said, okay, but you can't put a request in until the end of October. So by that time, the arch that's over there on the ground is going to be rather away by time people look at it, so like. So basically we're stuck with two quotes. So none of the people on the committee are. Construction engineers or architects, carpenters, but, uh. I went to the building inspector first of all and showed him the two quotes and I said, can you just tell me which one you think is the best? And he said, you're gonna need a building commit and I can't. Tell you which is best, I'm gonna go and inspect this thing afterwards. Okay. He says, I'll talk to some of these, he said he had a meeting that he was gonna talk to some of the building inspectors. Okay, fine. So last Wednesday, we had a, uh, committee meeting, Ocam Social Commission. And we're trying to get input from various people. I called, oh, Lobash here, we glad he showed up and Peter, uh. Ross, who was a carpenter on his own, and we hashed this out and something, which which one we thought was best. And we had problems with all of them. But, you know, the best one we thought was Tom, but you talked to Tom Petty at the museum, I think. We thought that his design was the best. But there's a little problem in here because the, uh, building inspector came back to me afterwards and said, I have to talk with him. He was like, you definitely need. A building permit to do this, you know, I didn't go back and say, well, it's just my fault, but first of all, you know, it's an arch. And I think it's like two posts and a thing going over the top. But he said, in order to do this, you have to get a. Architect or a building inspector to draw plans to go along with, uh, uh, building requests. And now you have to have a, uh, engineer that's going to oversee the building of this, you know? I think that's a bit much for this arch, but I don't know, like, like, and I I don't have my way either. Now, I don't know if I can argue this point or not, but it's going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars for an architect to draw up the plans and. And basically we're duplicating this arch and then we're taking measurements up with that. It's already been designed once. And we're just trying to improve on it, you know, we're trying, the rules we gave is we want to have a, an arch that's, uh. Built to last, you know, at least several generations, you know, we want, and we also want maintenance free. And the last one was not maintenance free, it collapsed because of a lot of numbers, so this is what we want. And the last one was not maintenance free, it collapsed because of a lot of numbers. So this is what we want. Pressure-treated lumber, we want. PVC on the outside, so there's no painting, there's no maintenance, it's just going to be up there and hopefully last for fifty, seventy-five years. But the problem I've got right now, right now, yeah, we're recommending the Tom Petty design, but we have to go back to them and make some changes. I know you wanted to have a bigger. They both wanted to use the existing concrete pad that was there. And this concrete pad was pulled by a western valley, so I'm pretty sure it's a good pad. You would want it bigger, I think, to support the weight. Joe Petty's design instead of. Uh, Leech Veris, the two thousand and ten design has two by fours. For the framework. One, the Joe Petrino, he wanted two by sixes and two by fours. Tom Petty wants four six by six poles in there, so it'll never fall, you know. But again, that's gonna be a lot of weight and maybe, you know. This guy's the architects. He's a guy I'm counting on saying, well, maybe we'll have to put into. I talked to Tom Petty afterwards and he says. I'll I'll check that out, you know, maybe if it's not going to be good enough, like we will put new pads in there as well, so. That's where I stand now, but the part that kills me is the building inspector. A building permit, which is going to kill it for a while anyway.
Isn't it just a sign?
Basically.
No, it's the planning board. Yes, the signs.
Yeah. I I looked at some things for signs too, and they've got. Wind requirements and stuff, so you're still gonna get an engineer to say it's not gonna blow over with a fifty mile an hour wind or something. I I was trying to say it's it's a shed. They have another one said a shed, anything that's less than two hundred and two hundred square feet, that's considered a shed. And I said, I can put tools on the outside and probably shed. I can put a swing in a little yard. Playground, you know, and that it's not a building, you know. But I'm like, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if I can squeeze this past the building inspector or not. I squeeze it by you guys, and I don't know. I don't know. You were gonna try to talk to him, I think.
I can talk to him tomorrow morning. He's in two states.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if he's gonna budge on this or not, you know. He wasn't sure it was gonna be, you know, he needed the building or not, but then he contacted some other building inspectors who kind of have a.
I I know there have been issues with like totem poles.
Oh, yeah.
Because they've rotted and fallen over. And so if it's a certain weight, I mean, that must be his concern. I mean, it's gonna be heavy.
It's gonna be.
What if it falls over and someone's walking over it? So it's gotta be strictly yours.
Yeah.
But.
The only trees do that, that'll be it.
Yes, they do.
It's not in this camera.
No. My house. I've had some trees on my house since I've been living there. So right now, it's kind of on, we're gonna have to do some more digging on our historical commission. We'll get back to you. But if somebody can talk to us, this building inspector and convince them that we don't need a building permit, that would be great.
That's what it says.
Yeah, I'm trying to get, the last one didn't have a building permit. You know, I know that, but we're going two thousand and ten one, they didn't get building permit. And I'm I'm trying to find out, there's two of them, which is exactly like that roadside cemetery. So I tried contacting. Them and say, did you have to get a building permit to put these up? And he hasn't got back to me, so it's still. Still doing some research on whether or not it is. Bill, you can talk to Duffy.
I can talk to Duffy tomorrow, and I think we'll also try and find out from the cemetery commissioner and Barry. Did they, not only did they not need a building, but do they have drawings from, as in pathfinder, on the tech?
It's might be checked. The problem is a two different schools, you know, Barry's on Monte Chek and I couldn't get the same people to do it. So that was, but I I think a blueprint, I would like to see some blueprints that they made, and if they had a contract that was overseeing the thing, you know, I got the guy's name to oversee the project. Trying to get on to that website is almost impossible. I keep on getting. This person, everyone, no one's there. I believe in Macedonia. I left a couple of messages and no one's coming back. I was still working on it. That's my update. I'm sticking to it.
A question, please. Barbara Pugh, gee, how much is the, how much is this going to cost to put an arch up?
The two quotes were twenty thousand and twenty thousand and seven seventy-four.
Maybe it would be easier and less expensive to put up a sign.
I've heard that rumor, but this is the only cemetery that has a book on it. You know, this pattern has been there since eighteen eighty-eight.
Yes.
And that's, it's a historical document of the town, basically. And that's what we wanted to do. Edie Mathis was the one that, last time. The town didn't put any money into it at all, you know, we, they had had a fundraiser, figured all night and put up the last arch. And Edie is now bedridden, and her cemetery. Stone is actually in Green Hall, and she says she wants to go through this arch. On her way out. Trying to help her out. Eva Grimes was involved in that, and she's passed away, so we're trying to carry the ball for those two. And you guys said that you had some money available to do that. So if you do, we'd like it done, and likely get something going before the snow flies, so they can get that arch out of there and go to their workshops and start working on it.
That sounds like the the building commissioner needs to. I know.
Yes.
Best shot. You had to do an awful lot of work for the playhouse, panic hardware and a lot of things that. Show the safety of the children.
Yeah. At least that's a building. This is a building. You shouldn't need a building permit to do something that's not a building.
I think the power to repair.
Well, even with, yeah, it's the same, existing building undergoing renovation, you know, basically that's what we're telling you. That's still under the. Application here, but it says building permit. For any building other than two or one or two family dwelling. Like I said, it's not. It's not a building. Treated as a shed of some kind. Also some guy, you know, chicken coop or some guy, I don't care what you want to call it, but it's not a building per se.
Right.
Get away with the footprint of two hundred square feet, which is way under that. We don't need a building permit. Still oversees the thing afterwards. People like to make sure it's gonna stay up fifty years or more.
Right. Like the Duffy and get back to us.
I got one, yeah. If we find more information, I'll get back to you.
All right. I'm a kilton.
Lucy had requested that on the agenda, just wanting to know. From position.
The application.
So it's on MMA, but obviously that keeps going further and further, so to reboot it up, just it's another fee to process it. Just wanted to make sure. I don't know if you guys want to post it elsewhere. There it goes at. You know.
We don't do indeed. Happy to do indeed. It might get, I mean, it might get non-government, people who are accountants.
You got the first.
Okay. Even through the MMA? Do they have to be a government accountant?
I think the first time around prior to this firm that is working now, it was a different firm. And they sent an accountant. She wasn't government, so she. Needed. So she just, which was great, because she was honest and said, you know what, this is not up my alley. I I. Didn't, she didn't want to waste our time, her time.
We thought you're an accountant, you're a kilt.
As Suzanne Chase, she says it.
So you need somebody certified.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we keep this other company going, we're spending a lot more money. I mean, they're good, though.
They're excellent, but need somebody here.
I mean, that office is locked and.
Storage.
Yeah. It's not needed. I know somebody would love to use it, but.
So website and I think on MMA.
I mean, if if it's got to be government, it might give a lot of people who don't have the required.
Oh.
LinkedIn as well.
Accounting Association.
Okay.
We don't have a LinkedIn account.
Oh, okay.
That's too progressive. We're gonna do LinkedIn, Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, YouTube.
I don't even know what LinkedIn is.
Oh, my, it's it's the Facebook for business. It's pretty much what it is.
No, I mean, I don't have access to it, yeah.
We're gonna do business.
It's not under, anyways, so it's fine.
Only thing I have. It's, this would be new, the topic of cleaning, organizing the second floor and attic. A retention of documents. And potentially disposal of documents. There's ballots from nineteen ninety-two or something up there in a box. There is old financials from the seventies. I'm just wondering. I mean, it's it's sort of in disarray. I would be happy to help organize it. And also. Ask that maybe Parks and Rec could potentially organize. That front room there and Board of Health can organize their area, but. It's kind of just. Up for grabs what people are doing up there and. That was new business.
We have a letter from the town clerk at two four selectmen dated September twenty ninth, on twenty three. Hi Christine Metros, you'll be stepping down as town clerk for the town of O'Cam on Thursday, December twenty first, twenty twenty-three. This serving the town of O'Cam, but with all the extra work and needs of the townspeople in the state of Massachusetts. I feel this would be the best, in the best interest of this town. A pleasure to serve the town for over twenty-three and a half years, and hopefully I would be able to make the transition to the next clerk as a small one. Sincerely, Christine Metros.
He's elected, so we don't have to move to acceptor as an.
When I suggest as we get a little town council procedure. Make sure we're doing great. I believe we appoint somebody temporarily.
Yeah, when I when I looked, it it lists the town clerk with in the same category as the select board. As must be elected, or the special election. I didn't see anything about temporarily.
Okay. Another part of the statute there is, but I want.
Because you have to, gosh, we couldn't go without a town.
I want a clarification council.
How long you can do it, yeah.
There's no way you're not holding election.
I know.
The advertised.
I would just say, you know, it's twenty-three and a half years of service to the town. Certainly, it it's appreciated, but understand her. Reasons for.
There's a lot of requirements that have come from the state in the past few years, and I should have mentioned them.
All these elections, multiple.
Multiple elections, there's a lot of work in that office. People don't realize that.
And I think for the town to understand also what we pay the town clerk. And the hours that it really requires. I think it requires more than what we budget for it. But.
Meanwhile, as I come to this building, she's here.
And she responds to emails on after hours and.
Yeah. It's a lot lower than four hours a week. She's working. Full business for the board. One more, Curtis Strong, we got an email. The flagary grant from the state for the. Body cameras for the offices, and he was awarded eleven thousand dollars by the state to get those.
Was that the full grant, full ask, do you know? That's great.
We did very well on that.
Eleven thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-one cents.
So at the last meeting. I provided to Lucy and for the minutes, a list of items that I had hoped at some point to show up on the agenda. And. So. Yes, I'm asking, since we can't discuss outside of the meeting, how do we go about. Putting these items on the agenda? Or are we discussion in a possible.
Making the schedule just. Thank you. With that idea, this board meets the set goals and objectives for the year. We don't with the departments. We're not doing it with us.
So I I think an easy, potentially non. Controversial would be suggesting that the board of selectman meetings begin. With the pledge of allegiance as a voluntary. Exercise for those of the board and of the public who choose to dissipate. There was a lawsuit in another town related to this, but it was important to emphasize that it's certainly a optional exercise. It's been done for decades at at Board of Select meetings, and so that would be. One of the items that I think would be. And I moved the flag to the furthest to the right. As a boy scout would know, it's either gonna be the highest or the furthest to the right with the speaker. More. Controversial issues or things that require a lot more conversation, the topic of. Making it an option for online applications permits, including the option of payments, including tax payments. I would love to see us at least investigate what that would cost. I know our website. Company does have. A system like many other towns where you can submit your applications online. And pay for them, but obviously, we would need to look at the costs associated with managing that. And the work that would be required to enter that information, but. The gov, the one that Rottlin uses, the same one that we use, I think it would be good to kind of get a session with them to kind of hear what that platform. I think it would be good to kind of get a session with them to kind of hear what that platform would look like, for a town our size, um, at least to have the information. I know when I moved to O'Cam in two thousand and five, I was able to pay my excise tax, um, online, um, and, um, I never had a late payment, um, and have had many late payments since, uh, we don't have that option. Um, but just to kind of look at the possibilities of that, um, and, um.
Yep, when we have that discussion, we should have the treasurer here. Ever involved in this.
Uh, location of the primary location of agendas, um, would ask that this be reconsidered, um, to allow, um, the uploading of an agenda to meet the forty-eight hour requirement, um, online. Right now, um, the board must drive down here, grab the key, um, find a pushpin, um, consider whether or not you can move the agenda that's currently posted, um, and, um, I, I understand that we have probably one-third of our population who are seniors, but, um, I have communicated with many of them who have computers and email, and, um, I think, um, uh, at least as the primary location, um, if we could, um, have a, you know, a full board to discuss uh, that as an option as the primary, since you can only have one.
Yeah. Lucy is.
Yep. And then I think, um, formalizing, um, ratifying, uh, policies, um, a process for creation of new policies. Uh, I had a work meeting policy to kind of understand, um, if there are gonna be votes, if there's gonna be public comment, um, those were concerns of mine, having work meetings, um, at nine o'clock in the morning, when many people couldn't be present, and then if you were, there was no opportunity for public comment, um, a finance policy, um, the Department of Revenue, uh, can create a finance policy to address, um, accounts payable, accounts receivable, um, processes for submission of, um, uh, of those things, um, it's.
We have a policy, I mean, there is a policy.
It's, I don't know that it's been distributed, um, because it's certainly something that I've asked for, um, from the board to help, and I think the last I've heard it was in process.
Yeah, you're talking about the DORs.
They have that lengthy, yeah, yeah, but it includes things like timeframes to, um, to do those things. Uh, and then, um, I manage a hundred and fifty employees, and we have, um, lots of HR policies. Um, and I'm just, uh, curious where all of our HR policies are kept, um, and, um, even looking at the, um, requirements for, um, public posting or posting, uh, in the workplace, um. In this building, I'm not quite sure where the most current is, um, but I know that what appears to be a, um, uh, posting seems to be outdated in the, um, Board of Health, um, Planning Boardroom.
So, yeah, yeah.
So there's potential, um, uh, wage and hour issues, um, if you don't have the current workers comp, um, and, um, uh, HR, uh, policies, um. And then the last thing for policies was, um, kind of adopting, um, use of website and social media. Um, there are, the MMA, which I've spent a lot of time on, um, does have draft, um, policies for uh, use of the website and, um, social media, who has access, um, to those, um, uh, things, and, um, even a, um, my hope is that we can, um, uh, get the message out more, um, on, uh, meetings, um, but I'm not sure that one person, um, can be expected to do all of this, and I don't think it, um, it's possible. Um, but, um, looking at a, I don't know that we have a, a policy on either of those things. So, um. Um, and then lastly, um, I just, um, hopes of, um, uh, additional future collaboration with all boards, committees, departments, and we've done that with the remote meeting policy, we've done that with, um, the tax exec has been shared, um, although there's some ST five, um, document that I found, um, I'll send it to you. Walmart requires that, um, so, um, but I, I will send that to you, um. So just in that effort of really looking at potential, even having like a quarterly invitation to boards to come in and, um, offer, uh, kind of what their, you might do departments, uh, department goals, but you've been hearing from the boards what their goals are, um, and how can the board of selectmen support them? So like the Council of Aging, are there any potential barriers to what to try and get accomplished, but, um, having an invitation, um, to do that on a quarterly basis.
Would you do that on a meeting?
I think, I think that would be an appropriate work meeting.
Work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't wanna study.
I would, yeah, yeah. Um. And then, uh, I think, um, the Finance Committee has already kind of rolled out a plan for the budget process and, you know, making sure that all boards and committees are engaged from the beginning to the end, so that at the time of posting of the warrant, everybody knows what was gonna be on the warrant, um, and. Uh, I did ask for the Administrative Assistance job description, um, and I did get that, I, I am concerned with the, um, uh, amount of work on that is, is expected, um, and, um, whether or not, um, the hours are sufficient to be able to, to get the job done, uh, fairly. Um, and, um, so I just wanted to kind of look at that. Uh, it seems as though while everybody else's jobs get busier, town clerk, uh, Board of Health, uh, Council on Aging, um, we can expect, um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure what the, um, budgeted amount is for that position, but I'm not sure that that continues to be, um, appropriate in order to get things like meeting minutes, um, especially done, which I think are really, uh, important, um, that, that we need to make sure there's enough time in a week to, um, get all the work done. And that was everything on my list from two weeks ago.
It's the HR policy, listen.
Yeah, but those are all wrapped, I'm assuming? Oh, really? Okay. Okay.
So I can. So they need to be distributed.
And I would recommend, if we had a SharePoint drive, they could be on a SharePoint drive, um, and other towns post their policies online, um, because I didn't know that any of those policies existed. And I did look through all the minutes going back to January, and I didn't see anything.
We have to.
At least.
Executive Session, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one dash two, conduct strategy session, preparation negotiations with nine million personnel, and this one will be Highway Superintendent. And we're only coming up with executive session for June.
Um, I would, uh, sorry. Did you make a motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, fair.
Hi.
Steve, are you still there?
I am.